All right, where's our new facilities guy? All right, let's call this meeting to order. It is Tuesday, September 2nd, 9:00 a.m. A special meeting to share our public hearing about the fiscal year 2026. Allison has offered to provide the invocation and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So Allison, take us on.
Thank you. During my quiet time this weekend, I was struck by a verse from Joshua 9. Leading up to this verse, there was much ado about the Gideonites' elaborate deception on the Israelite soldiers. And while the Israelites were at first suspicious and had little warning signs going off in their minds, they neglected to do one thing that could have changed their trajectory and outcome. Joshua 9:14 says, "The men of Israel sampled their provisions," or the Gideonites, "but they did not inquire of the Lord. When we pray to the one true God, the one who created us, we're talking to the one who knows us by name. He even knows the number of every hair on our heads, or the lack thereof, and he desires a relationship with us. He delights to give his children good gifts, and he's also our great Comforter, as we've noticed across our nation over this last week. As we go about the work he's assigned for us, we have the awesome privilege of inquiring of the Lord as individuals, at home, as we commute, and here together as we begin our time together." One way we can pray is by praying Scripture back to the Lord. In my prayer today, I'm going to be praying Philippians 4:8 back to the Lord this morning. I've written it as an individual prayer, and if desired, you're welcome to pray it in your own silent prayer to God while I pray out loud. So shall we pray? Good morning, Lord. You are an awesome Creator. I praise you for how you paint the sky each new morning and at the end of each day. Just as a painting reveals the existence of the artist, creation reveals the existence of you. You have created each person in your image, from conception to our last natural breath. You have ordained each one of our days. God, I thank you for the people of Ottawa County. Thank you for preparing good works ahead of us. Help us to steward the money and resources entrusted to us with great responsibility, with wisdom and discernment. I continue asking you to show us what's next as we seek to govern justly and by godly principles laid out for us in your word, the Bible. God, in Philippians 4:8, you tell me to think about what is true, noble, right, pure, lovely, admirable, excellent, and praiseworthy, and to also put them into practice. God, you define all those things in your Son, in your character, and in your word, the Bible. God, as I go about my life at home and in the public office seat you have placed me in, I ask that you would help me to train my mind and consequently my actions. Thank you for helping me to think about what is true, to think about what is noble, what is right, what is pure, admirable, excellent, and praiseworthy. God, I thank you for going ahead of us as we search for our next county's administrator. I ask that you would show each of us who you have already prepared for this new season and by your grace, that it would be obvious to us, both individually and collectively, who that person is. Thank you for Jesus and the hope from the cross and the resurrection of your Son. We're a messed up people and are lost without you. Each day I'm reminded of my own shortcomings, but then you remind me of how you canceled my debt. Lord, our nation needs you and we need you. You're the one we can run to and hold fast to in the storms of this life come, and in good times and hard times, you are where the joy is. For yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
The pledge.
I pledge the oath of the United States of America and to the republic which extends one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're a messed up people, Allison. That is so true. Roll call, if you would. Rachel?
Mr. Berry?
Here.
Mr. Jerritzma?
Here.
Mr. Zylstra?
Here.
Mr. Bonama?
Here.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mrs. Wenzel?
Here.
Mr. Teeples?
Mrs. Rhodey?
Here.
Mr. Kiers?
Here.
Mr. Bruegger?
Here.
Mrs. Medema?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any correspondence, Regina or Rachel? No? All right, at this time then it is public comment. If you would like to address the board, this is your opportunity to come forth and speak. Three minutes, please, and state your name and address or voting district would be great. Would anyone care to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Ryan Cotton, 515 Park Avenue, Grand Haven. I am told that this is a budget hearing where you're going to discuss the Community Action Agency and especially some of the work they do with energy efficiency. And Michael, first statement is actually a question. Is this the right time to give you public comment on that, or should I wait until that discussion?
Sure, right now is a good time.
I was formerly city manager of Grand Haven, Michigan, and in that capacity, we accomplished something called a community energy plan, which resulted in hundreds of homes receiving home energy retrofits, including 475 deep retrofits. We were motivated to build off of and use the Ottawa County Community Action, or the agency associated with the energy efficiency and for low-income families. And that made a great foundation for a lot of the work that was done and was included in the work that was done. We were assisted in that by a former county employee who worked for that. I think I have the title wrong. It's not the Community Action Agency. But it's the energy efficiency grants offered through Ottawa County and the weatherization program. Anyway, what I'm getting at is Peter Bogart used to work for the county and he lives in Holland and New Zealand, and he was participating in Holland. And anyway, lots of that knowledge came and made a huge difference. Lower utility bills, higher efficiencies, better place to live, more affordable homes, and the like. We've adopted that now in the city of Grand Haven. Grand Haven Township and the city of Ferrisburg now have a community energy plan also, and all of it sprung from the work that I've associated with Ottawa County and the weatherization program. So I would encourage you, and as we go forward, to make those hundreds of homes better weatherized and more affordable in northwest Ottawa County, like was done in Holland, we're going to be depending on using as a foundation the weatherization program. So I urge you to continue your support of that program, and it has done a lot of good and will do a lot of good. Grand Haven Township especially is looking for more affordable housing, and of course, all of us are looking for an improved environment and less carbon pollution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Would anyone else care to address? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Consent resolutions? Anyone care to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the August 26, 2025 Board of Commissioner meeting?
Make the motion.
Got a motion and/or second with Jordan? All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, agenda and action request, public hearing. All right, and actually, Ryan, I do apologize, you could also comment during the public hearing. Would anyone care to make a motion to open the public hearing to receive comments on the fiscal year 2026 Ottawa County budget?
Who moved?
Second.
Moved and supported, discussion is open. All right, at this time, again.
Probably vote.
You have to take a vote.
We have to take a vote, sorry. Did I miss that? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. At this time, Ryan, I guess if you'd like to make further comment, you're welcome to do so.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, would anyone else from the audience care to comment on the fiscal year 2026 Ottawa County budget? Hey, seeing none, would anyone care to make a motion to close the public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 Ottawa County budget?
So moved.
Or?
All right, any for discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries. I've got nothing from committee reports. We can do public comment again. Would anyone from the audience care to make public comment? Becky, I just see you sitting there thinking about it. Good. All right, we'll close the public comment then, seeing none. Additional business report from the county administrator. Gary, have you got any updates for us?
Just a couple of quick things. Commissioner Zylstra had asked a question. I don't know if this was a good time that you'd...
That was a great time, for sure. Yeah, definitely.
Inquiring about when we were going to release the candidates' names. The last two weeks, we probably spent more time on preparing for the next two-week schedule, trying to figure out when our candidates can get here, when, you know, we're going to have a full board present. So we've been communicating with the chair and the vice chair throughout the last two weeks on putting, you know, schedules together when we're going to release information. And it was determined that we're preparing a news release. We'll have it prepared this weekend and it'll go out first thing Monday morning to release the candidate's name prior to their interviews with the community, individuals that are going to talk to them. You know, why it wasn't released before, that was a decision. The candidates, you know, all wanted, you know, confidentiality, you know, up until last week. Ron's been engaging with a couple of them and, you know, that was a concern they all had when their names were going to be released. So the decision was made, again, the chair and the vice chair were aware of that we were going to release them on Monday morning.
I guess just to clarify, that the candidates wanted confidentiality until when? Until the 8th?
Well, no, they wanted it as long as we could provide it.
Okay.
And so we decided Monday morning.
Okay, I mean, I think we've had this discussion many, many times about the balance between, you know, residents and candidates, and I think we've done a great job last week on the voting procedure preserving, you know, their confidentiality. But at a certain point, you know, residents do have a right to know, right? And I think, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but my understanding is that the Citizen Work Group is interviewing also on the 8th? Is that correct?
On the 8th, right.
And that you're telling us that the names will be released?
Right.
Just prior to those interviews, right?
They're going to be released Monday morning early.
Okay, I mean, from my point of view, it seems kind of late, but I'm open to hear other commissioners' comments.
Anybody else care to comment?
I first have a question. Have all the five agreed to an interview? Ron's shaking his head yes. If they've all agreed to an interview, then they have waived, in a sense, they have waived their confidentiality rights because they have agreed to go on to the next round. And so I would agree with Commissioner Zylstra. At this point in time, we did protect the confidentiality leading up to this point of all our candidates, and I do think we need to err now on the side of transparency to our public prior to September 8th. It'd be very similar to a board agenda coming out and it not being announced until, not everything on it, not being announced until that morning. So I would prefer it to be done very soon, actually.
Anybody else? Joe?
Sure. If, I'm just thinking off the cuff here, but if everybody's going to be public now and they're all committed to interviewing, why wouldn't, why couldn't we just release it today? Right, that would give the public about a week notice so they can provide feedback to board members. Otherwise, they'll have, you know, very, very little time to provide feedback. How much time would be allowed, feedback before board interviews if we follow the current plan to release the information next Monday? What was the schedule? Two days? I guess I'd like more than two days to hear from my constituents. I'm just hearing from some now on the blending issue. Sometimes it takes a little while for citizens to really have time to reach out and think about things.
There will be a long time before, not necessarily a long time, but there will be a time before we actually vote on hiring. I mean, there's all the time after we interview to provide feedback. I don't...
Do we have a, speaking of that with Jordan, do we have a timeframe on when we would likely vote to make an offer? What the date is on that? I forget, I don't have the...
I guess that's up to the board, and that's based on the number of interviews, how long you go that day, and if the decision going to be to adjourn that meeting and come back, you know, so that's a decision that's hard to put in place right now when you all are going to vote.
Yeah. Sounds like it's possible it could happen that day from...
Good.
So if we're waiting, you know, we could gain a week of transparency for the public by just putting it out today or tomorrow.
And I would just, you know, go based on experience, you know, that we had a hiring decision where input would have been greatly helpful. So, you know, some of our feedback here is based on decision, you know, decisions we've made in the past where we've not had enough public input. And so I think Commissioner Moss is right, where, you know, the public does need time for things to percolate, for them to know these names and to get back to us. And, you know, there's a reason for transparency, and that's what it is. And I would like to see the names released right away because I want that feedback from our community. I want to know what they think.
So we've heard from Joe, Jordan, Allison, Doug, Sylvia? Anybody else have a comment on this? I do have a thought to share too, but I thought I'd wait till everybody's had an opportunity to speak.
I'd have a comment.
Jim?
Thinking along the lines of public notice for when we have a meeting, we have been, made a lot of effort to make sure agendas are out Friday at noon before a Tuesday meeting. I agree, there could be a little more time that the public should know who the candidates are. I don't know what discussions were held with the individual candidates and what assurances were given, but, you know, I think if we could even go to Friday announcement, I think that would be helpful.
Kendra?
I agree with Allison. I think that they've agreed to the interview process, so I think that we should let the public know who those individuals are.
I'm good with Thursday or Friday, like we do with our agendas, so.
Got it. Jacob?
Is there any reason preventing us from releasing on Thursday or Friday? We need to notify them that they're going to be made public Thursday or Friday?
Ron's the one that had most of the conversation, so.
Ron, would it Thursday or Friday?
Just so they can be prepared.
Disrupt them much? I'm looking at a compromise solution, if you will.
Media will be reaching out to them, I'm sure, so it'd be nice to give them a heads up out of courtesy.
...email exchange with one candidate who was very much concerned about an early release. We did mention the possibility of a Friday before, and my impression is he was okay with that. The others really didn't express a significant concern about that, other than there is an understatement.
If you want to talk into the microphone, I don't know that we can hear you.
Oh, I suppose we can hear you, but I don't think anybody else...
I'm not sure the public can hear you.
Come on up to the mic.
Sit down.
Oh, no. Sit down, get up, Ron, come on over. Speak into the mic.
I just want to make sure the public can hear you. Thanks, Jacob.
Yeah, as I indicated, I did have an extended email exchange with one candidate who was very much concerned about an early release. In fact, he held off his agreement to be interviewed until we came up with the probability of September 8th, but the possibility of September 5th. And then he said, okay, I'm in. Others, I didn't have that same exchange, but my impression is from their email responses to the invitation to go forward, that they were concerned to some degree as well. So if you're asking my opinion, I think we could probably do September 5th, and it'd be a compromise and meet everybody's concerns, I believe.
I would just encourage it to actually be Thursday because it's very well-known that you do press dumps on Friday because people are heading into the weekend and they miss the information. So if we're truly trying to be transparent, I think we really need it out by Thursday.
I guess my response, and I appreciate that, my response is I've had this extended email exchange with one candidate, never talking about an earlier date than Friday the 5th. I don't want to lose that candidate because of a release too early, so I would hope you consider that in your decision this morning.
Is it possible to do a Friday first thing in the morning? Like a Friday at 5:00 is really not okay.
Well, no, I don't think we talked about a time on Friday.
Okay.
It could be whatever time we're directed to release, so.
Joe, I saw your hand come up.
I'm curious as to what the concern is of individuals who are applying to lead the county of Ottawa.
Yeah.
These individuals are leading, looking to lead a $300 million county. What is their great concern with having their name known?
You're going to have to ask them when they're here to be interviewed.
Okay.
I mean, I can imagine they're concerned about their current employment and how that might be jeopardized, but I didn't get into a, you know, a debate of that nature with them.
Sure. Anybody else? I know, Joe, I want to go around one more time here. Allison?
Very, just briefly, I very much agree that it, I would love to have it by Thursday at the latest, actually. Like I was thinking a whole week would have been preferable. So to me, I'm, from my point of view, it's already a great compromise to go forward and wait a couple more days. I don't think it takes much more work to reach out one more time and just say, hey, the board has had a conversation and we would like to release names, and that gives that individual who you seem to have a concern about, that gives them an opportunity to talk to their employer yet for a couple of days. So that's just my...
And I was quite frankly surprised that this wasn't already released. I thought it would be released within 24 hours, so I'm very surprised that it's not out yet.
All right, thank you, Sylvia. That's, gotcha. Anybody else before we move on? I will say this, I'm inclined to go with the plan that's laid out. However, I'm absolutely fine with a compromise on Friday. I can see from the applicant's perspective, they've got to notify, if they haven't already, one would hope they have, but they've got to notify their current employer, they've got to notify their spouses, their family, and if Ron's had a conversation that has led them to believe that Friday is the earliest that we would do that, I want to honor that out of respect to the applicant. As far as input from the public goes, I'm in no decision after our initial meeting, our interviews, to make a decision right away. At that point, if we want to pause with the public, having now had the opportunity to see the interviews, to listen to the candidates' responses, and to do their due diligence behind the scenes, if we want to pause for a few days, absolutely fine with that before we make our decision. I think that would address all of the concerns that I've heard. Doug, you want to go one more time?
Yeah, well, I think we've kind of finished on Friday, hopefully early in the day. I guess I still have the question, what that week looks like? We talked about a Citizen Work Group on the 8th, talked about us meeting on the 10th and doing interviews, but after that, the board doesn't have any indication what the next step is, right? Are we going to take those five candidates and narrow them to two, take those five and narrow them to three, take those five and pick one? You know, I don't have any reference when I look at these five candidates and when I'm looking at them next week, what is our game plan, right?
Doug, Gary, go ahead.
Well, I guess I don't control the board, and that's really the board decision on how they want to vote for candidates. The other thing I could say, because of the fact, you know, we did seek out the board chair and the vice chair as we were putting this information together, and there's been correspondence that Ron's had with the candidates. I would prefer a Friday release then because to me, it kind of lends a little bit of credibility to Ottawa County as well. When we share with a candidate that it's not going to be released, it could be released, but it's not going to be released until such and such a time.
I think we're okay with the Friday. I guess my question is, what happens on the 10th after we're done with the interviews? Are we just packing up and going home? You know, or how are we thinking about these candidates? And when you say it's a board decision, we haven't actually had that discussion to make a decision.
Well, Doug, I...
Well, you'll have discussions, I assume, after.
I would prefer to have them before, so we kind of, when I look at the five, I know what I'm doing, right? Am I mentally winning them down to three, to two, to one? And Phil seems to say from five to one, and that's the process, that's the process. And that's totally, you know, that's what we agree on, but then I'm going to look at the candidates differently. I'm going to look, okay, who is my one candidate of the five as opposed to who is my top three? Who is my top two?
Again, I think that's a board decision because...
I know you keep repeating that, but let's have that...
Any decision that I give or Ron gives, this board will change.
Right, so I...
I would say this, Doug, absent John being here today, I'm not going to make any decisions as the interim chair, but happy to take input on your thoughts on when we want to do that. So you've had an opportunity to speak. I see Joe's hand going up. I'm just keeping track here. Joe, you want to go ahead on that? As far as what you believe the timeframe might look like after the interviews?
Sure. I like what you suggested, that we do interviews and then take a short break, you know, whether it's a couple days, few days, whatever it needs to be. There's no, we don't have an urgency behind it since we have Gary and Ron.
Not too long though, I think Gary and Ron are ready to...
I think we want to be judicious with our time though, right? Because there's also probably some transition period and things like that. So accepting citizen input during that time period would, you know, that's one thing I look forward to doing. I have maybe a question for Phil, maybe, on going to one candidate. So if the board does interviews, takes a break, solicits feedback, and then comes back to vote, if we vote to narrow to two or three, that would allow an opportunity to do something unique. I think that the board could build consensus as we narrow the pool. Because the last thing that we need is to have a split vote at the end. So by having just one vote, it's very likely you're going to be split if you're just choosing one candidate. If we start to narrow... If we start to narrow it in some way, we may then work down to a point where we build consensus across the entire board.
That was directed to Phil.
Just a thought.
I'm good with two, but I don't see no sense of having a whole interview all over again.
Agreed. I agree with that.
Do two and then we re-vote, that's fine. But to bring them all back in a whole another day and do an interview, I don't think we need to do that.
I agree with you. Yeah. I don't, I don't think we would need to do
No.
additional interviews.
Good. Ron, you stepped up to the podium.
Well, I, I don't know whether we're on the verge of a motion to change the release date or not. But if we are, I wanted to share an exchange to give you an idea of, of what's been going on. Candidate asked me, would I be in the correct ballpark to think that public release of names would occur on Friday, September 5 or thereabouts? My response was the release of finalist names will be no earlier than September 5 and probably will not happen until the morning of September 8 by press release. Then I get this response. Thanks again. Officially, I accept the invitation. Please, in italics, if the release change plan changes, or if the release schedule plan changes, kindly let me know. This person is teetering on the edge here and I don't want to lose him.
And Ron, I, I don't think we're going to have a motion. It's a little bit more of a conversation. And at this point, I, I think the consensus is that we're shooting for Friday. What I'd propose is that you reach out to that individual just to give them a courtesy heads up that, hey, we're, we're heading in Friday. And if they are waving red flags all over the place, then let John and I know and we'll consider it. Anything else on, you know, number of candidates to select, Doug?
Not number of candidates, but I think we're, I guess we're going to have that discussion later on. Last thing, on, on, you know, we had discussed this before with Sylvia and myself about.
All right, Doug, I want to get everybody's, his input on.
Yeah.
How we want to, yeah, as long as you, did anybody else have a comment? The last exchange with Joe and Phil, maybe we narrow down to two. Does anybody else have thoughts? Jordan?
I think if we have, you know, our interviews with five people and we're all good with not doing another round of interviews, then I don't know why we need to narrow it down. I mean, we can decide who we're going to hire however we want to at the next time that we meet. So I, yeah, I, I, that's what I think about it. I don't know that we need to go in with a expectation that we're narrowing it down. I mean, the goal is to get to one eventually, right? So.
We'll get there. Yeah. Allison, did you?
Uh, just one thought. I do appreciate taking a pause after the interviews are complete on the 10th. It would be nice if we could schedule another date to come back and take a vote to potentially move forward with two. And I would recommend just one thing to consider. I'm open to other suggestions, but to potentially have that as an opportunity to give those two that we've moved forward with, an opportunity to do more of like a tour. Potentially, it's something that we could have a second interview that looks a little bit different than the first one. We could kind of work through some of that, but I, I would say it's, it equates very much to the business community, to other communities that interview to go for a second round. So.
Okay, good. I do have a question for Ron on the tours. If you can maybe step back up. At one point in time, we had talked about doing a tour in an open house with the candidates. That was in the first double hall iteration. Is that a part of the puzzle with this one or are we?
Actually, what happened thereafter is Scott Vandenberg put together a great video of all the facilities in Ottawa County and we kind of substituted that for the idea of a tour. A tour would be logistically a challenge, I think, to do it within a reasonably small period of time. So, you know, we'll take direction from the board obviously on that, but that was the compromise that come up with the video.
And, and not to say that the tour not.
Yes, I was meaning more here. Like I understand that the county is much larger than here, but for those two candidates to actually give them a walkthrough and.
Yeah, that could be done. In this building, you mean. Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
We can talk about that. Jacob, anything? I'm just going around the horn.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the opportunity. I think it makes a lot of sense to release the names before the weekend, give everybody a lot of time to, you know, ponder and think through and, and I think even our Citizen Work Group a chance to. This is a Josh's strict chair.
You know, I'm glad I'm not the only one that.
He told me before the meeting, hey, move over, the water's warm. I didn't know I got a sinking chair with it. We're good. We're good. Little fun this morning. No, I, I fully support that. I think it's important to, you know, bring folks in. For me, I, you know, to Doug's point, I am looking for the one, not narrowing down to two. I'm, I'm thinking about that. And I think I personally prefer to go from five to one. That's where my head's at right now. So that's where I stand.
Phil, anything further on that?
I, I totally agree with Jacob. I'm, I'm going from five to one. If we do end up doing two, I think we get it done by, before the weekend on Friday for sure. Two days is enough to decide on that, in my opinion.
And Doug, I'll come back to you last because you. Jim, got anything?
I'm such an optimist. I think sometimes you get into these things and the individual becomes apparent as you get into the process. So I'm, I'm holding out that guidance will be given and it will be apparent. But I think we could be flexible going forward, but I, in my mind, I'm probably looking for the person.
Okay. Good. Kendra, anything else? Two. Kendra's liking two. And Sylvia, I think you.
Um, I, I, I do agree with a lot of what's been said. I, I like the idea of, you know, I think one set of solid interviews is probably enough, but I, I hear you, Commissioner Meadamot, that, you know, sometimes when you're going through a process, there is a need for more follow-up. So I don't want us to completely close the door to that if, you know, for, for some reason, we end up feeling that we need that. But I don't, I don't want to vote too quickly. So I, I think I would pray for more than two days before we come back and vote again. But I also agree with Commissioner Moss that I like, I like the idea of narrowing it down from five to a smaller number and then voting again. But don't necessarily need a second round of interviews unless that becomes apparent.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I, I will say that I am looking for the one, but I, the process as how we get there, I'm flexible on. And I do think, as it's been stated, that it is very important that at the end of the day, we do land on a unanimous vote. Whether that's through a two process down to one or a second vote for the individual gets the most votes. Even if it's a symbolic nod to that individual, I think that'll be a great way to move forward. So, good. That takes care of reports from the administrator unless you've got anything else. Oh, sorry, Doug. I didn't go back to you. You had another one.
No, that's all right. So we.
I was so excited to wrap it up.
Well, it's only 9:30, Josh.
All right, we got time. Carry on, Doug.
You know, Sylvia's talked a lot about the Citizen Work Group and, you know, I think we share concerns about that. Can you give us kind of the update on where we are with the Citizen Work Group on the eighth? Ron, appreciate that.
Actually, I could do a little bit better. We actually have the names if you'd like to see them. There's been a, a change in the membership of that group. The plan is they will show up Monday morning. By nine o'clock, we'll be underway. Three interviews in the morning, two in the afternoon. We're leaning towards Conference Room H. However, we can live stream from there. It'll be open to the public and open to the commissioners, obviously, if they like to attend. We're going to have lunch provided. And we are going to use a scenario that we developed with double hall back in June as the baseline for the interviews. And then I have some specific questions on the scenario. The Citizen Group then will have the opportunity to ask follow-up questions. We have, and we're working to refine a report sheet which we will pull together and get to the commissioners, hopefully by the end of that day or certainly the next morning. So you'll have a couple of days to look at that. And, and I guess evaluate the, the comments, suggestions and reaction of the Citizen Work Group members. So that's the plan.
So just to reiterate, we will have a live stream of that interview process. And do we have a release of the names, the new names?
Right. Justin couldn't be there because of something like an anniversary trip that he had had planned or something. But we authorized him to, excuse him. Sarah, the prosecutor.
Not sure we authorized him, but.
Well, yeah.
Didn't object.
Will be taking his place at the table.
So Sarah Matojic instead of Justin Robach? Okay. So I only had six names on there. Sally Gruppin, Gordon Gellinger, Mark Bennett, Amanda Price, Rob Bilcek and Karen Lo and.
You, you have an old list. We're going to give you a new one right now.
Okay. If, if we could have that because, you know, one thing that I, I, I personally don't, other than Amanda, don't know any of these folks. I know we have a lot of elected officials throughout the county. There's nobody here from the city of Holland. I think Lynn Raymond would be a great choice to add. I think if we're looking at former elected officials, Chris Kleinsen would be a great name to add. You know, if we're looking for citizens, citizens, Becky Patrick has shown to be, you know, a big student of this board. And we've talked about this last time, how do these names get here? And, you know, I don't know how they got here. And, you know, Sarah, I appreciate her insight, but you know.
Doug, I'm sorry to interrupt. I, you've already shared that you don't find value in this committee.
I, I've never said that, Josh. I've never said I don't find value, right? I find value in a more representative Citizen Work Group. I find value in having it, you know, live streamed.
Well, I apologize. Thank you. I, I have no interest in changing the names of the committee members. I think that's been set. Staff has worked on that diligently. John has worked on that diligently. But yeah, go ahead. Sylvia, keep track, here.
I just have two process questions on that. So it's great that we're looking at that being livestreamed. I, that's awesome. Are we noticing that as an open meeting? I'm just thinking about some legal technicalities. We need to make sure we're checking.
I believe we are. Some variation thereof, Ron.
Yeah, I've been in touch with our Open Meetings Act attorney about that. Prelimarily, I'm told it's not an open meeting in the sense that we have to have an agenda, public comment and so on, but we will confirm that in writing before we get to the end of the week.
So and we're holding it as an open, public meeting. Anyone can attend, right?
That's right.
So, so the one technicality on that with, you know, the recent Supreme Court case and stuff on the Open Meetings Act is if we're getting recommendations out of that committee that are coming back to the Board of Commissioners, I would be concerned if we're not noticing it. So, so I personally, I would just recommend that, just notice that it's not that hard to notice it. And then you're legally covered as having, you know, a, I mean, today there was even hardly any public comment. So probably that's not going to be a huge issue. It just, it just helps you legally be covered that you've done everything you need to do to be transparent. Because I just have a sneaking suspicion, we're going to have something come back to us in the form of recommendations or suggestions and then it gets a little gray. So.
I mean, we can debate the, this issue. This group is going to be told that their role is not to deliberate.
Right. But if you're providing these recommendations, it's still a little iffy.
Okay.
All right. I, I know we've hit this issue quite a few times. Anybody else on OMA? Kendra, do you want to weigh in on that? Or have you got another comment? Nope. Anybody else? Joe, go for it.
Yeah, I think the meeting should be noticed. If it's an open meeting, I don't want it to be a fake open meeting. Just notice it.
I like that fake open meeting.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Kendra, you had one more comment?
I missed something, but what was the process of getting these names and who chose them?
We've talked about that numerous times. I'm not going to weigh in on that one again. I think, anything else? Nope. All right. Gary, you good? Good. All right. Commissioner comments? We can go around the horn. You can talk more about it if you want to, Kendra. Let's, this is kind of fun. Allison, how about we start with you? Are you ready?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, nothing. All right. Jacob?
Oh, I'm good.
Bill?
Good.
I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Jim?
I'm good.
Kendra?
Sylvia?
I'm good too.
Hey, Joe, this is, somebody's got to say something.
I know. I want to say something.
Yeah.
Can't break it.
Or maybe don't break it.
We're, we're way past 9:30 here. I told Phil, no, I don't have anything.
Jordan? I'm very much looking forward to this process. Thank you to staff. That's it. Very diplomatic there. All right. And I have no further comments other than, again, thank you to staff. This meeting is adjourned.